Evening, everyone. Welcome to the IVE in beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the Grand Forks City Council's committee of the whole from Monday, February twenty seven. Under N one call the order, one point one, welcome and roll call.
Vidal.
Here.
Soski, here. Weber.
Here.
Lundy.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
Sammy.
Here.
And being.
Here.
All present, good for him.
Thank you. We have everyone here tonight, item two point one, plans and specifications for project eighty five forty one, thirteen forty three, and forty five districts. Five eighty six, three fifty five, five eighty seven, and seven seventy six. Sanitary water main, storm, paving, and street lighting for Grand Valley first edition. Phil.
That goes present Sandy members of panel. Tonight I have with him and ask Ed Edgar and him up from engineering, also Marie Sturzbeck, come up from finance and me, I was a Curry is here on behalf of the developer. And so we want to go over this particular project. We just want to make you aware, we're kind of at the moment of truth for this. We're going to bid. This Grand Valley, it's 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 going to go over all the various infrastructure components that we've put together. So this is a ten million dollar plus infrastructure package. That's going to come your way in all the various underground components. We have looked at, Marina will go over some of the charges for the infrastructure to try to kind of realize some of the economies of scale with this project. And I think what Mr. Curry is most worried about is that, you know, the beds will come in appropriately. All that infrastructure is going to get applied into lots and that they can be as affordable as possible. And we really won't know all the details until some of those bits come back. So with that, I'd have Ed come up here and give you some overview on the various cost shares that we've worked with Curry as a developer and then also Marines move forward with looking at some of the fee structure regarding this large project and have that core with you. And so as you approve this, you're really approving some of the negotiations that we had with the developer in this case. Thank you, Ed.
Mr. Lein, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy. So this is our next project in line to see the Grand Valley development come to fruition. You may recall over the past year, we started out with a sanitary lift station in Forest Main that was paid for by the city for our policy. The next project was the the stormwater pond, which the city contributed twenty percent toward by by policy. Both those are under construction. And the next project that we're bringing forward tonight brings sanitary sewer, storm sewer, potable water, paving, and streetlights to this development. We have been working with CPS of Grand Forks, who's been designing this this contract requirement. And we're currently estimating this will be about a fourteen point four million dollar contract over which will accomplish this over two years. Previously, the districts were created and there were three separate city cost shares proposed, one for oversizing of water mains, one for extreme depth of the sanitary sewer, and one for the cost share on classified roadways. All those were administered per city written policy for CIP cost share. There is one more cost share that engineering is recommending tonight. And that is for the drainage, the stormwater drainage coming off Washington Street. When we apply our stormwater drainage policy, we're typically looking at rights away that are maybe ninety, a hundred feet wide. Right away on Washington is two hundred and fifty feet wide. So at the request of Curry Developments, we discussed that with them and came to the conclusion that a twenty percent cost share simply on the material that would support that drainage only was appropriate. So we are recommending a twenty percent cost share on that material and that's estimated to be about two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. And would be paid for from fund fifty four hundred stormwater fund. So with that, engineering is recommending approval of plans and specifications tonight and a direction to advertise for bids for this contract.
Thank you. Mr. Lein, any questions? Move by Weber, second by Wigel. Yes.
Maybe I'll just point out just before you move. One of the items that comes with this duty economies of scale and we're looking at those market breaks that we on charge on these special assessment projects and we are recommending as part of this approval to lower some of those rates still generates plenty of revenue, but helps offset some of the costs of those projects that allocated to those lots. So we are recommending reducing that two percent markup rate down to one percent of the interest from four percent to three percent in that administration from eight down to five percent. So with that, this comes with approval of that due to the large economies of scale of the project. And I don't know if Russell wants to say anything about the project or if he wants.
Mr. Weber.
Ms. Torres, this isn't costing the city anything.
No, no, this gets passed on. Well, other than what Ed went through on cost shares, we special assess this goes to the to the properties.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Where is the stormwater holding? Any other questions, Mr. Lein? Where is the stormwater holding?
It would be the stormwater pond that currently under construction is south of sixty second avenue. It's on the it's on the east northeastern edge of the planet property for this development.
Northeastern quarter. I guess. Yeah, thank you. So I think I see it here, so. Any other questions, Mr. Lein? I think, Mr. Philen, if we're going to utilize economies of scale to reduce our assessments, what we assess projects, I think we should try to come up at some point, come up with a standard policy on that. We don't need to do that this minute. This is a fantastic new development and its size certainly is significant to warrant the economies of scale discount. But I think we probably should try to at some point in the future, whether administratively, come up with a concept. At what point can we do that?
Yeah, well, well said, Council President Sandy. Marine and I have talked about that. And so to approve this, we'll come back with a policy and we'll set up parameter and obviously visit well, you know, a large development that we don't often see in Grand Forks. So we'll use this as a benchmark and then those smaller developments where someone's developing, we'll say ten lots or something. And in those those developments in between, we'll come back as a follow up to this request.
Thank you. Any other comments? There's a motion and a second, although in favor, say on.
Thank you.
Post same sign. Which carries unanimously. Thank you. On the two point two plans and specs for project eighty six thirty nine, district seven seventy two reconstruction of second avenue north from Washington to North Queen Street, Mr. Lein.
Thank you, President Sandy. This project previously met city council on February sixth, where the district was created. We held a public input meeting this past week and was attended by, I believe, it's three properties were represented and they generally had technical questions. They were generally in support of this project. Just one clarification on how construction would occur and what they should expect. So with that, we are finalizing plans and specifications. The total construction cost is about one point six seven five million dollars. The city cost share for that is eighty percent, since this is reconstruction of a local street. That amounts to one point three four million dollars. That is slightly above the budgeted amount. If bids come in above budget amount, we will request a budget amendment of city council. At this point in time, we are requesting approval of plans and specifications and direction to advertise for bids.
Mr. Lein, any questions? On the assessment district on the north side of second avenue, you can go all the way to university instead of halfway to university.
We do that because university avenue is a classified streets, but and by policy, we would take a local street district up to that classified streets.
So those individuals facing university would be paying part of the assessment second.
That's correct.
Any other questions, Mr. Weber?
This is part of a long project of restoring our streets after years not addressing these issues. We still have some remaining pockets. This is one of them. We'll move the group.
Thank you, Mr. Lein. Mr. Soski, seconds. Any other comments?
It's in rough shape.
Any other comments? There are none, all those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign. Here's unanimously. Thank you. On the two point three plans and specs for project eighty five seventy three, the district seven seventy one. Reconstruction of Legend Lane from twenty eight thousand south to Greenway, yes, Mr. Lein.
Thank you. This is a continuation of the work we've done over the past three years on South Twelve Streets. This keep driving south, you hit Legend Lane and this pavement is in very poor condition. We're estimating total construction reconstruction of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This this also qualifies for a city eighty percent cost share. So the city shares roughly four hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, which is within budget in fund forty eight fifteen. So we are requesting at this time approval of plans and specs and direction to advertise.
Thank you, Mr. Lein. Comments or questions? Second by Wigel, second by Tommy. Any other comments? There are none, all those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign, which carries unanimously. On two point four plans and specs for project eighty six seventeen and eighteen and eighty six seventy eight, twenty twenty three concrete street repairs, arterial street, concrete rehab, and twenty twenty three subdivision, concrete rehab.
Thank you. This is our annual contract to essentially repair small concrete concrete blowups, shattered concrete panels, curbing gutter, that's or catch basins that might be deteriorated. It's generally a small requirements contract. We've allocated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that type of work and we spread it amongst three different types of work. General street repairs, arterial streets, and subdivision rehab. We call it subdivision rehab because we like to focus on those subdivisions that are say between ten and twenty years old and they have panels that got cracked during during buildup, et cetera. So with that, we are requesting approval of plans and specs and direction to advertise for bids.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Lein? Move by Weber, second by Wigel. Any other comments, all those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you. On the two five, plans and specs for project eighty six sixteen, twenty twenty three asphalt street repairs. Mr. Lein.
Thank you. Very similarly, this is for asphalt street repairs. We put fifty thousand dollars towards this requirement just in case during spring thaw the certain portions start to ramble and fall harder faster than we anticipated. This gives us stability to repair those. So we are requesting approval of plans and specs and direction to advertise for bids.
Mr. Lein. Move by Bean, second by Tommy. Any other comments? There are none, all those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign. She carries unanimously. Thank you. Out of two point six, bid award for project eighty four sixty one, sixty two, sixty three, and sixty four. District five eighty four, five eighty five, three fifty four, seven sixty three, sanitary sewer, water main, storm, sewer paving, and street lighting on forty first avenue, south of South Main, Queen Street to the south end, Greenway.
Thank you. This is the last component of our Edgewood Village development. It's forty first avenue cul-de-sac. It's relatively small. Small area, roughly thirty five to forty lots being provided through this infrastructure. We held bid opening last week and we received two bids. The low bid was by Op Construction and it was thirteen percent over engineers estimate. Usually we are were able to nail the estimates pretty good or our estimates were a little higher, so we're scratching our heads on this one. What we believe happened is this is a function of the small nature of the project. So just the opposite of Grand Valley that we talked about economies of scale. This is small requirement, but it has all the light utilities, the lighting, the paving, a lot of mobilization. So the cost we believe came higher as a result of that. The the two bids were within one percent of each other and they were both larger Grand Forks contractors that we feel comfortable with their bidding abilities. So we don't believe this has been not an anomaly. So at this time, we're recommending award of a little bit to Op Construction in the amount of one million fifteen thousand four hundred and two dollars and forty cents.
Mr. Lein, any comments or questions? Move back to Tommy, second by Wigel. Any other comments? I'll make one comment perhaps. When we're looking at economies of scale on larger projects, we should be looking at smaller projects and determining if we're charging enough for engineering. Et cetera. Thank you. All those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign. She carries unanimously. Nine oh two seven, bid award for project eighty six nineteen, eighty six sixty, district seven seventy four, twenty twenty three mill overlay and greenway rehab.
Thank you again. This is a good news story on our bids. We receive bids for our annual asphalt mill and overlay contracts. We had three bids received. The low bid was submitted by Op Construction. As approximately five percent under under the engineers. This this actually accomplishes four different projects around Grand Forks. The majority of the work is in the we call the U N D neighborhood. Very much in need of a middle. There's a small section by by the Amtrak station in Demers. In next section of the Alaric Center Park lot and then an overlay of a portion of the greenway. Those are funded through different means, but two of those, we are slightly over budget, so we're requesting a budget amendment for the Demers Avenue requirements and the Alaric Center Park lot requirements. With that, we request award of this contract to the low bidder of construction in the amount of eight hundred and forty four thousand seven hundred and thirty one dollars and sixty five cents.
Questions or comments? Move by Zane, second by Soski. Not hearing any other comments, all those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign. Which carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lein. This work tonight. Out of two point eight, finds specs project eighty six thirty four, before prime. Streetlight reconstruction in South Fourth Street, gets into dirt to the university avenue, railroad tracks north, twenty. Mr. Crank, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. What you have before you is the approval of plans and specs for a number of street lighting products that we have, one of which has been long in progress. Back in April of twenty one, the community foundation ended up coming forward to the city and working in a cooperative manner and looking at the university park neighborhood. Throughout a lot of work involving the neighborhood, our planning department and ourselves, some of the items that came to light to help improve the neighborhood included some safety upgrades, including installation of street lighting along the university avenue corridor. One of the big concerns that residents had is typically when a street lighting project is bid out, a new project on a classified street like university avenue is typically special assessed twenty percent to the benefiting property owners and the city pays for eighty percent. There were concerns from property owners in the area as to being special assessed for that funding. So the community foundation offered to cover what would normally be special assessed. This project includes eighteen new streetlights along university avenue from the twentieth twenty street to the railroad tracks east of Washington. And then the second piece of this is complete replacement of a number of streetlights we have along South Fourth Street. There's existing street lighting there. Those streetlights are coming old, they're heavily, poles are heavily rusted. The underground conductors have corroded to the point in which all of the cables are actually strong overhead. So we're looking to completely replace that now. Past practice for replacement of existing streetlight has been that the city ends up paying for those products a hundred percent. So that project be hundred percent city funded while the university avenue project would be funded at eighty percent city and then twenty percent will be covered by the community foundation. Tonight, I'm also joined here by Becca from the community foundation as well as representatives from the planning department. If there are any questions. And with that, staff is recommending approving the plans and specifications and directing the engineering department to advertise for bids.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Weber?
First, thanks to the community foundation for their participation in this long process as well as their support for helping offset the cost there. And thanks also to all of the of the individuals, taxpayers who have been giving of their time freely on on this project. There's been a lot of community support buying all along. The the photo on page three of the staff report, that's an existing lamppost. How will the what will the new lamppost look like? They will also be able to accommodate banners. Is that right?
That is correct. This project will include bear arms. There will be a separate project that will come forward in the future to actually procure those banners.
So they'll be bannerable. They they don't they don't have the current banner arms, but that's clearly the intention.
That is correct.
Will there be an additional cost when those banner arms are installed?
That would be probably a question for the bear arms are, sorry, the bear arms are going to be a piece of the construction project.
Very good.
The banners will be a separate.
Okay. And the the reason, is it just because it's about lighting that these two very different projects are being put in one staff report?
Typically, street lane is all done by an electrical contractor, so we do try to get as many of those street lane projects together as possible to try to develop an economy of scale, especially when there's similar street lighting poles.
That's the only connection here.
Correct.
And the overhead wiring, that only applies to the the portion along South Fourth Street.
Correct. That's that's an existing condition. Our electricians have done that to make sure that those lights are operable.
Right.
Otherwise, there's a lot of pavement downtown and that would involve a lot of drilling, a lot of pavement removal.
Fantastic. Thanks. Thanks again to you for everyone who's been involved. I'll move the group.
Thank you. There's a motion, second by Soski, Soski, question, comment?
Well, well, they have the option to have power. I know we struggle in downtown to have power. We're looking, you know, can the poles have a power?
Festoon circuit, yes.
Okay.
That's a festoon circuit.
Yes, I hear that.
So what would that be used for?
For like if there was a.
An examiner or something. Something, yes, very good. Awesome. It's not, I don't just get the program anything I want to.
You probably.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Other comments or questions? There are none, all those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you. On the two point nine engineering agreement project eighty five fifty seven, Columbia Road overpass rehabilitation.
Thank you, President Sandy. What you have before you is the engineering agreement for Columbia Road rehabilitation project. This project is being funded through the DOT on a part of an eighty percent federal funding, twenty percent local funding. And this is kind of the first step in getting an engineer on board to do the environmental document, the design work associated with it. In following the DOT process to get an engineer on board, we did proposals. We received one from interstate engineering. They were interviewed and the appropriate steps were taken care of through the DOT considering it only had the one proposal. It was then negotiated for a total of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Estimated city cost on that engineering agreement is approximately sixty two thousand. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the engineering agreement.
Any other questions? Move by Bean, second by Tommy. Who carries this, Mr. Weber?
In addition to the utility of this overpass for vehicles, there's an important pedestrian walkway along there as well. I don't imagine this is going to be involved in the project in any way, so.
This product itself, project itself is primarily dealing with
an island.
Well, it's it's painting, sandblasting, painting, the steel structure that's underneath as well as replacement of the the bearings underneath. So there's there's going to be little to no pavement work associated with this.
Very good. Thanks. Well, while we're spending someone else's eight million dollars, mostly, can anything be done to the pedestrian walkway to make that it's exposed to wind, it fills up with snow, which becomes a real problem trying to get rid of that snow. We either dump it down on the railroad cars at the parking lot or try pulling it back into the roadway. Can it be covered in any way?
Why don't we bring that back for another meet? That's a great, great idea. Let's bring it back at the next committee, the whole meeting. And actually somebody think about it and then rather than putting data on the spot.
Thank you, President.
That's a really good idea. I think it's more of a discussion. Any other comments? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say on.
Aye.
Post same sign, which carries unanimously. Out of T ten engineering agreement. Project eighty six eighty six, Phoenix Elementary School safety study.
Thank you, President Sandy. At the January seventeenth city council meeting, also member Lunske ended up bringing up a request for a safety study around the Phoenix Elementary School. This neighborhood in general has had a number of studies here in the past looking at a number of ways to improve safety, try to reduce speed throughout the neighborhood. This is an attempt to follow up on that and look into quite a bit more depth. A number of the past studies were completed through the MPO and the MPO because of the requirements that they have at the federal level. They could only look at it so far in depth. This study is proposed to be very in-depth, getting a fair amount of public input through having multiple public input meetings as well as sending out direct mailers to the entire Phoenix Elementary School district or school boundary to make sure that we get sufficient and as much public input as possible in this room. Some of the goals of this, we want to get a public input meeting to listen to the neighborhood and find out what their concerns are. That way then as the engineer gets into this more, he can take that into consideration and try to look at some of those trouble spots that they end up bringing up. In addition to that, we're looking at doing speed counts, vehicle counts. Initially, we're looking at using a number of video cameras to get a better idea as to the comings and goings as people drop off students, as people pick up their students. And in contacting the the engineer in this regard, one of the options they came up with was instead of using, you know, six or eight different video cameras, was actually getting a drone up in the air to get a bird's eye view. That way then you have everything in one video file and you can get a better ideas to a more complete image. So that was included in this overall. I know I did receive a email, council member Lunske, with concern as to the timing of this. Right now, the initial schedule ended up looking at sometime in March to try to get an idea as to pedestrian bicycle counts, those sorts of things. We can certainly end up pushing that back. It will likely extend the schedule a little bit. And as long as that's not an issue, that's something we can certainly do as well. The schedule was a preliminary. It tries to give everybody a concept as to what all will be included and how long this would take. This is a fairly involved process. We're looking to get a number of alternatives out there and also get those alternatives in front of the public as well and get their input on them. Before bringing that back to council for final decision of some things to move forward. With that, staff is recommending approving the task board agreement with both the bank, the engineering services, and the amount of seventy six thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars. And we're currently looking at, I believe, the schedule had its completion, I believe, in August. Yeah, July or August for completion, but that may need to get extended.
Mr. Soski.
Okay, what was the engineer's estimate on this?
We did not initially have one. As we started this whole process negotiating the scope of the work, that's really where a lot of this came into play. Overall, there's a number of hours that get put in, especially with public input meetings. So that's all negotiating with consultants as to costs associated with it.
I did a little digging on the internet and for traffic studies, I found that the average cost is between three to five thousand dollars per intersection. Up to thirteen thousand dollars for a single intersection with multi-phase development. I mean, I understand that, you know, this is a safety study, but we're still studying the traffic of it. Now, the average cost that we're paying is twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty three dollars per intersection. Some of these intersections have been studied, you know, obviously more than once. So how much money are we going to put into studying these different intersections before we actually do something?
In these past studies that have been done, we actually have done a fair number of items. One of the more recent MPO studies that were done along Reeves Drive, we ended up including a choke point at Reeves and Reeves Court. So that's a place where we essentially put a bump out in the middle of the road to try to narrow the driving lanes. We also ended up installing two different speed tables along Reeves Drive. One was asphalt. One was this, one was a rubber speed table. Overall, the the impacts of those were found to not over not significantly reduce the average speed of the vehicles along the corridor. So we ended up removing the rubber one. Let's see, what else? At the intersection of Fourth and Belmont, that was the location where we did have a traffic signal there at one point in time. I believe that was hit. The first one, I think, was hit in. I believe that was hit, the first one I think was hit in twenty fifteen and I think the, uh, second pole was hit shortly thereafterwards. And looking at that intersection, um. It was determined that a four-way stop was the best option. We actually installing that with the blinking lights, uh, to bring. Uh, attention to that stop, that way then people actually would stop at that location. And talking with the principal of Phoenix Elementary School, he's been very supportive of that. Um, with the main concept being if, if you drive up to a traffic signal, um, it may be a green light, it changes to yellow. People may or may not stop. There are people who do run red lights. However, if you are coming up to a stop sign, you know that you need. Um, so he's been very supportive of that, especially because of the, uh, the students walking in that area. So there have been a, a number of things that we have implemented based on these past studies. And, uh, it was, the study is, uh, hopefully going to end up giving us a number more that we can start implementing in the future.
Um, so I drove around the area and I can agree with almost all the intersections that are on the list, uh. There is one that seemed a little bit odd. It's about five city blocks away. It's Eighth and Reeves. And I guess I would like to know how that is a safety concern for the children because. Every which way that I came to that four-way stop, I mean. There's not really a straight shot either way, so cars. Do have to slow down and stop and pay a little bit of attention, and so. How, you know, was that specific intersection chosen versus even the one? Um, because there's Reeves, Belmont, and then what's the other road? Chestnut, you know, because I know Belmont and Eighth was chosen, but Chestnut, Chestnut and Eighth was not chosen and. Those are the corners of the block that the school actually sits on, so how did this one get onto the list when it's? Not even near the school.
Main reason why Reeves and Eighth was selected was because historically in the past, especially when the traffic signal was located at Belmont and Fourth. Um, there was actually traffic that couldn't go or had difficulties. Going westbound and then making that left turn to go southbound on Belmont, and so one of the things that happened. Uh, because there, there wasn't a designated left turn lane and there wasn't a designated left turn signal to allow only that left turn in traffic to turn. A lot of that traffic ended up shortcutting down Reeves, and one of the places that a lot of that traffic. Uh, turned off, uh, back onto Belmont was at Reeves and Eighth or further south at Reeves and Thirteen. So when looking at that intersection, you're looking at, how was that traffic that is crossing the Point Bridge going through South? Uh, how is that continuing to travel through the area? And if that traffic gets shifted over to Belmont, uh, how that traffic fully impacts. The area as well as the parents and guardians dropping off and picking up students at Phoenix.
Right, um. I think, I mean, I, as a mother, I don't think there's a price that can be put on the safety of my children or anybody else's children. But I mean, we have to be a little bit physically responsible, uh. Are there other people that we can get bids from for this project? Or, I mean, I know it wasn't fitted out, correct?
That's correct. Uh, Boltman Bank was selected from our pre-approved list, and then from there we ended up negotiating the scope of the.
Obviously, we have another study that's ongoing regarding bridges, um, with our friends over at East Grant Forks. What? Can you tell me why we wouldn't wait to do this study until that study comes back or? Should these two studies be done by the same person? Um, instead of two different contractors, essentially.
Uh, that initial study that you're speaking of with East Grant Forks, that is more of a scoping study, so that is looking more at. Um, what is the requirement from all the other entities? Um, and then looking at potential other funding sources as well, so that doesn't really get into a lot of the fine details. Um, we have had a couple of studies that were done in the past, uh, in, in twenty twenty-two, one was done by the MPO and then one was done by the city. As to traffic impacts, um, for the, the new bridge locations. Um, so we end, we're going to be building off of those studies, uh, with this as well.
Sure, I'm sorry, Mr. Cloney. So, question, I guess, or comment, so one of the reasons we're doing this now is because it's a, it's a need that needs to be addressed now. Right? We don't want to put off safety for kids, right? And I, I really frankly like that it's not the same engineer. I like that it's us controlling it and not the MPO. So we can drive safety, this isn't, I mean, traffic, yes, that's what we're studying, right? But the, the reason we're doing this is to address safety around the school. And if we can be in the driver's seat and control that and not wait for any other entities to weigh in, we're just gonna. We're gonna do what we can to make this as safe as possible, as quickly as possible. That's exactly what I was hopeful that would happen, and I appreciate that. Most, that'll move approval.
Well, the reason I wanted it to be moved is that this winter's just been atrocious when I think. It's an awesome possibility, it's a wild down, great, so I think less people are walking now. Um, so I, I wanted to push it to May so we could get actual counts of people walking. Um, and in your opinion, do you feel this is overpriced?
Considering all of the public input and all of the stakeholder input that we're looking at, that's a lot of the funding that's. A lot of the hours that the consultant is charging is a lot of that coordination. Um, and that's one of the big things that we wanted with this. That's one of the things that past studies have, have not gone as in-depth on. Um, and it's been one of the things that we've received feedback in the past as to, um. Reaching out is to the neighborhood is a very, very important thing, especially with how vocal the neighborhood has been in the past. It was a piece that we felt is, was very important and wanted to strike for.
There's a lot of damned if you do, damned if you don't.
Yes.
Uh, we don't get public input, we get public input, now it's too expensive. I, I think that this is moving forward in the right way, thank you.
Yeah, just, and the MPO we talked about, especially we talked about the other bridge locations, but we felt we shouldn't, we should not wait. For the bridge that is to be done to start this one. In fact, there's not only this one here, but I think one at, on Thirty Second for Kelly. I think that's another location where we should probably go down and do some additional studying and not wait for. Some type of alignment of a future bridge, and I know, uh, former Councilmember Rock and I had talked about that before, Trish, you were on. Uh, the MPO, so I, I think this is an excellent move forward and I think we probably could be doing more of it.
And if I may, one, uh, one other piece that, uh, Mr. Keenan brought up as well is that this is a not too c amount, so this is. It could go up to seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, but it could also be less.
So we plan on taking action though after this study and not just doing another study, sitting on it and then doing another study, sitting on it, right?
That is our hope.
Okay.
Does the school district have, uh, any interest in helping pay for this?
Um, I have not asked the school district if they would have any interest in it. Uh, my communication has primarily been with the principal of Phoenix Elementary School. Um, and making sure that they were willing to, to have some involvement in this. As well as potentially have the study look at improvements on the Phoenix Elementary School site as well. To help mitigate some of these, uh, these traffic concerns.
I, I think that there's an opportunity there to, to have them help out on certain things. I think it's good, um. They are our citizens, they're our kids, um, but they're also the Grand Forks School District's. Um, students as well and they are a taxing entity and this could greatly benefit them as well as the neighborhoods, so. It may not hurt to see if they would like to help invest in the safety of their children as well.
I could certainly ask.
Mr. Webber?
Have, have we previously had other taxing entities, the county school district, park district?
I think we partner in certain ways. We pay, they pay fifty fifty on the school resource officers, for example.
Right, we partner in many ways, but not street studies, I think they're called city streets, um. Have we, have we done this previously with the school district and any screen studies, traffic studies?
Not that I can recall, but, uh, that doesn't necessarily mean that that hasn't happened in the past.
Okay. There's a motion in the second. All those in favor are saying aye. Which carries, as Soski says, thank you, Mr. Griffin, on the two eleven task orders, here at project eighty six eighty seven. Clearwell Pump Station V F D and Lightful Improvements was transferred.
President Sandy, members of the committee, um, Clearwell Pump Station was constructed in two thousand and one. It serves as the main pump station for the entire city. For potable water, um, it pumps out an average eight million gallons per day. Um, there's four pumps, one of them's running twenty-four seven, three sixty-five all the time. Uh, this constant pumping over the last twenty-two years has taken a toll on the variable frequency drives that power the pump motors. Um, over the past few years, the cost to repair and maintain these drives has increased significantly due to scarcity of parts. Currently, these drives are considered obsolete and now parts are completely unavailable. Due to this, we think it, it's the right time to replace all four drives before they fail, leaving us unable to meet peak pumping demands. The attached task order from A two S covers the design, construction and management portions of this project. Once the project is bid, the results will come back to you for approval before any work begins. In an effort to get this project done this year, um, we would like to approve pre-purchase of the drives. For this project. The ideal time to begin this project is fall/winter due to lower water usage, so we can take pumps offline one at a time, fix them and bring them back online. In order to get these drives for a fall start date, we would need to order them as soon as possible due to extremely long lead times. And then another possible benefit to pre-ordering is we will eliminate the possibility of the contractor marking up the drives during the bid process. We received two quotes for these bids with the lowest and preferred, uh, being Eaton Corporation, an amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. And twenty-four cents. And then finally, City Council did approve six hundred thousand dollars for this project in the twenty twenty-three Water Department budget. Um, so with that said, we're asking you to approve the task order number forty-one. For project eighty-six eighty-seven Clearwell Pump Station V F D Electrical Improvements and Design to A two S to the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars. We're also asking you to approve the pre-purchase of four variable frequency drives for Eaton Corporation, an amount of. One hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-four cents each total.
The, the Clearwell Pump Stations is just south of Minnesota Bridge.
That's the intake, that's the raw water intake, the Clearwell Pump Station is right next to the, just south of the new water treatment plant.
Oh.
So, it was built there. Um, in preparation of the, the new treatment plant being built.
I see, thanks.
If we, if we buy these directly, can we save on sales tax?
Uh, that would be a question I, we.
We have to install, we say. What are you guys doing next weekend?
Well, they won't be here next weekend.
Alright. There's a motion in the second, any other comments? Legislative update.
Council President Sandy, members of council, uh, so the North Dakota State Legislature is at crossover, which is equivalent to, uh, the sports fans out there, it's halftime. Um, so, uh, when the session started, the, the Grand Force Legislative Committee was tracking ninety-one bills, that's all the bills were introduced. At, uh, crossover here, we're now down fifty-seven, um, uh, the. Legislature will get back into session, uh, on Wednesday, so at the end of this week, there, there are some, uh, committee hearings, uh. Pretty high level, but the water bill, um, is, is going to be heard for the first time on Friday. Um, as is the Department of Transportation bill, those are those, some of the larger budget bills. Can be heard in committee many, many times. Um, we got through the, the first half of the session from a, a funding standpoint, both with, uh. Roads and, um, and water, um, doing pretty well through the first half. Of course, we have to get through the second half. Um, and then, of course, uh, there are two, um, pension-related bills still existing, one that kills the pension and one that, that keeps it open. Um, so we're, we're keeping an eye on most two bills as well as, uh, the city is under the, the state pension plan. So, other than that, I'm open to any questions. Um, it was a late add to the agenda online, so, so please take a look, but. I did come up with a crossover report, which lists all the bills that we are tracking, all the bills that passed, all the bills that failed. Those will be provided testimony for, just to kind of give a, a synopsis of what we did in the first half, and that, that is now on.
Great information, thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, and for City Council Member Discussion Matters, Michael Soski.
Okay, so last week I asked for, must have weekly updates on Foo Fang and. I was told that it can't be on the agenda, so could someone please tell me how I get something on the agenda?
Uh, Council President Sandy and, uh, Council Member, uh, Soski, um. Generally, I put the agenda together on behalf of Mayor Wachensky, and so when you see agenda items, um. I'm the one who places on, but I'm doing it on behalf of, um, Mayor Wachensky. I did communicate with Council Member Soski and I said, we didn't have an update, uh, for Fu Fang, but we do intend to bring one back. Regarding EDC's role with the City Grand Forks. Um, also regarding planning and zoning, um, and. Providing updates on that. Further, we do intend to bring back, I think the discussion is regarding the Fu Fang and how we're going to move forward with the letter of credit. And those various aspects, so, um, we are engaging in those matters and we anticipate that we would, we would provide an update. But on, on all three of those areas, I don't have any further information to provide you. We may have, um, some at the City Council meeting. Um, but some of that will, um, those two updates that I just spoke of regarding planning and zoning and. Um, Grand Forks Region's role with the City Grand Forks, I'm intending to, uh, put those on the next call, so two weeks from today. But we may have, we may have an update on, on the Fu Fang project itself, um, and that will primarily be provided by Mr. Costin.
So what is the status of the letter of credit? It, has it, has he sent that in?
Um, Mr. Gosted is in discussions with, uh, Fu Fang's attorney in, in that regard.
So no, it hasn't been done?
Uh, well, he's actively engaged with their attorney.
Okay, how long do we have legally to submit that?
I think we're, uh, I can't speak to how long we have, but, um, I do know and, and I've been briefed by Mr. Costa that he is in, uh, conversations with. Uh, Fu Fang's attorney, and I would anticipate that, uh, he'd provide a briefing to you in the near future.
Where is Mr. Gost? Okay, um, has Foo Fang's bank authorized the payouts under the terms of the letter of credit or development agreement? I'm assuming you don't know that either. Um, does anybody know Foo Fang's current intentions regarding their land? Has anybody reached out to them to find out what their plans are?
Mr. Gost is at conversations with, uh, Fu Fang's attorney. And I suspect there'll be more conversations and all the particulars from the letter of credit to the, the land and all those things. I think they're inter, interested in having a, uh. A discussion and all with the City Grand Forks.
Okay, um, is the city taking any active role in facilitating, um, the sale of the land to another developer? Like, are we?
Uh, we are not currently, but like any, um, any, uh, citizen or business in Grand Forks. If, uh, people have asked, asked that support from the City Grand Forks to facilitate it, certainly we will, we will do our best to, to help engage with that. Um, so yes, if, if asked upon and, and the private sector wants the grand, City Grand Forks' support and help them. We certainly have always said yes to that.
Okay, um, is Foo Fang still officing on campus?
I do not know that answer.
I reached out to Mr. Armikos today and he did not return my call, so if someone could find out that answer, I would really appreciate it. I believe it's the third. What is the city's plans to repair relations with the Department of Defense?
Uh, that's an ongoing matter and, uh, and again, uh. We, we're visiting with the Grand Forks Air Force Base all the time and, and with the US Air Force and. We'll probably have a trip, uh, yet this year with, at the Pentagon and also likely with Air Combat Command in Lake Lake, Virginia, and so I, I would anticipate that we'll. Um, we were, we were last at the Pentagon in March, um, of last year, and so. I suspect we'll pick up from those conversations and I think, uh, what's the, um, positive part with the community is that we've only been success. Over this past year with, uh, further developments, whether they even had Grand Sky or the Grand Force Air Force Base, and I think. I think the Air Force knows that Grand Forks, um, is, uh, a proud. Um, proud of our base and it will do everything we can, and so we've demonstrated that over the years and will continue to do that. And that's the message we have sent to, to the United States Air Force.
Um, as for depth two, uh, has a scope of work been provided covering his cost and deliverables?
Yes, we have that. I think, um, in discussions with, uh, Mayor Wachensky. Uh, we're evaluating, uh, in this particular area as we move forward about what kind of support that we do need, and so. Um, he's in consideration about how we move forward in that regard, so I would anticipate, uh, a more broad strategy, come back. Come back to the, yes, the council.
So does he provide regular reports?
He does.
Yeah, can I, am I allowed to see that?
Sure, he provides billing and then also verbal, um, discussions with us regarding his activities.
Okay.
The briefing meetings are open to public.
Um, I haven't. I asked, I sent an email asking for some of the brief meetings for the, um, meeting minutes, and I haven't gotten those yet. Um, I did look online and I saw. Um, I did look online and I saw. I think there were some up until like two thousand nineteen, and after that I couldn't find any, so if you could provide them, I would be. Or if anybody could provide.
Councilman Osowski's behalf, I've reached out to the county, they've been, they've been the organizer of the meetings and and that, as the Burke coordinator, so. I'll certainly share that. Um, generally, we've met, uh, once a month, um, sometimes, you know, sometimes less, but I will make sure that everybody. Or that Gracie Leon from Grand Force County is the one who organizes those meetings, so. I'll make sure she gets that out to all council.
And I don't believe they're recorded, even Mr. Sandy, so. I wasn't able to watch any of them. I don't, I believe in the email that, um, that kind lady sent me that she said that they are not recorded, so. Um, does Deptula's lack of cooperation with the D O D and clears? And clear statement that the Air Force was not involved with Foo Fang mean that that Tula was not providing adequate services?
I would, I I can't answer that question. That's would be an, uh, opinion.
Alright, I think I'm good.
But thank you, and I'm always open and, uh, to any feedback or if people want information.
Um, when can we get an update from Mr. Gosta, though, on the letter of credit? That's a little concerning. I think it's three point four million dollars.
I think, uh, I don't want to speak with Mr. Gosta. But if our city attorney is actively negotiating with another attorney. I don't think he would want to provide an update and tip our hand to the opposing attorney. I think he would probably prefer to try to negotiate things in private. But if you want to call him, I do want to bet he tell you anything you want to know.
I think he's Mr. Sandy.
Just a guess. Uh, Mr. Robert?
No, uh, thank you, Mr. Salsky.
Uh, a couple of follow-up items. I know last meeting, we had talked about some type of after-action report. We we've gone through this huge. Process to date and trying to do some follow-ups, some lessons learned and things we can do better. I have a number of questions that will. And be to get into each individual one now. But I think there's some things that, um, they maybe have some opportunity to do. I've I've brought up a couple of them. Um, especially probably looking at zoning, uh, and there may be some opportunity there. So I think in a, in a productive way, there's opportunity here, and I don't know what you guys think about if that's. A value to follow up on. I certainly think it might have value for us. Uh, one of the areas that I'd also like to have some discussion on, especially as we're preparing the development agreement, again, for. The bean plant that we have some discussion about what works and what didn't work within the existing. Development agreement and how there might be some avenues for moving forward. So I just, I throw those out because I think they're important issues that we should. Proactively be addressing and not wait until something's before us and then have to react to. Start to curiosity, Mr. Bean, following the same line of thought regarding Mr. Gostad and. And Foo Fang. How much of a public discussion do we want to have about the things that worked and didn't work? Prior to entering into the, there's a huge development agreement with. Someone that's going to be listening and wanting to actively negotiate against us. Actually, I'm hoping we don't have. An adversarial negotiation, that we would be able to talk about the things that pretty openly on on most of the the items. One of the things, as an example. I would like to be able to do is not to. Have to negotiate agreement to get answers. And is there a way that we could get some of the answers? Identified or whatever in advance, we could work on those, because it feels like if we have to pay money to get answers, there may be a better way to do that. And I understand the other side is for them to develop, because we're looking. I I believe we're looking forward to have a development. How do we make it into a win-win? That's, that's where where I'm trying to do it, and not not see it, uh. Adversarial, I'm hoping at all. We need to protect the citizens of Grand Forks, but we're also looking at economic growth. How do we, how do we align those together? Um, uh, and then make sure that we, we have, we follow through in such a way that hopefully we avoid. Adversarial relationships. So I I throw that out for discussion.
I think we can do both. Um, I think, I think we're always learning. Um. I think we can learn some things and apply things to the future, uh, but I also think there's things too that, um. When we went back and talked about, I I compare it to when we talk about City Hall and all the security upgrades we're doing. There's a time and place for those things, um. And that's not always public as far as those goes, but I think we can apply both concepts of. Um, being good negotiators on behalf of the citizens as well as. Um, learning from, from things that we encountered during that development agreement, so I think we can do both.
So I don't, I don't necessarily say I'm putting something on table and defining it. I'm just kind of laying it out there. As an special item, because I do think we need to do, we need to have some follow-up. It's a matter of how do we orchestrate that to make it be. Productive and useful.
If I might, uh, suggest, I think we're going to be bringing back the epitome energy agreement likely in the March, April timeframe. I think when we bring that through, I think we can highlight some of the things we learned and some of the things we adapted from that as part of that discussion. Certainly, if you have. Information now that would be helpful as part of it, we're always, uh, open and willing to discuss it. I would not advise you, and again, I'm not your city attorney, I would not advise you to do. Um, to highlight things that, uh, as part of the development agreements that we did well or not so well. Uh, because certainly I think what I've heard, uh, from our city attorney is Fu Fang wants to find. A way forward with us. However, I would not advise you publicly to, um, highlight things that. Uh, we may have done wrong or not as well as we should have. I think there's a time and place for that, and the time for that is not right now. And, uh, but when we bring the epitome energy, um, project through in development agreement, we certainly will highlight things that, um, that we. We thought of, um, and moving forward. I'll give you one example. Um, with the, um, epitome energy agreement, what I've advised the city attorney is with the Poofong, uh, development agreement and the infrastructure. Similar to the tax incentive. They got a ninety percent tax incentive over the first ten years. Eleven through, year eleven through twenty was a seventy five percent tax incentive. We haven't negotiated that yet. Okay, so that's one thing we learned. Number two, the infrastructure. What we, um, uh, negotiated in that, um, with the infrastructure is that. With the rates, they would get a ten-year, uh, kind of incentivized infrastructure rate. I have advised the city attorney, we're not going to do that as part of this, um, negotiation. So those are two things that. Um, I would highlight that we say we're not going to do. We're certainly going to do all the things with cost shares and those sorts of things. As part of it, uh, certainly, uh, there's going to be discussion on China, uh, where is this investment coming from? Uh, those sorts of things. We're going to have discussions of that, and I think if anybody in the room thought, you know, uh, the China thing, we couldn't, we're never going to get ahead of. Okay, um, political risks and and those are things. Can we get this project done? Um, we can get a soybean crushing facility. How do I know that? Because they're doing one in Spiritwood, they're doing one in Castleton. Um, it's a much heavier, not less heavy use of infrastructure. Um, where Fu Fang was six million gallons per day on on the raw water side, um, probably two and a half million gallons on the wastewater side. Epitome Energy is very much smaller than that. By in the wastewater reuse side, I think we're planning for like two hundred fifty thousand gallons per day. Uh, on the drinking water fire, we're going to have to partner with Agassi Rural Water. That's going to be a difference on this one. We're doing in a traffic study similar to what we did. I think the challenge we're going to have on the epitome side versus Fu Fang. There's lots of transportation networks that we need to improve on and and those sorts of things. So. Those are all things we're, we're thinking about, and I just, I mean, there's a few things that I I've learned about, and number one, we ha- we highlight the project epitome energy, and we told the city council first. Okay? And, uh, did we do that with Fu Fang? No. The other thing we're going to do in this project, because, um, these economic development projects related acre business. To be frank, without the city Grand Forks, these projects don't happen. Okay? And so what are we doing in this case? We're going to lead the project from the start. Because at the end of the day, our story has to stay the same, and we have to own whatever happens. And so what have I done on this one? I brought it to city council. I told that can I down? We're going to lead this thing. Why? Because it's our development agreement. And most of the investment that's incumbent with this project are going to come on behalf of the city of Grand Forks. Um, but I think we have a developer and and Mr. Regan and his team are excited about being in Grand Forks, and we've always tried to get to yes. And that's what we're going to do one more time on this, and similarly, the development agreement, we tried to get to yes, and we couldn't get to yes on those things. And it was a very complicated project, and looking back in the Fu Fang project. Um, to be frank. It was a large project. It was probably personally, it was probably the last project I really wanted to work on at that point in my life, to be frank, Ken. Okay? It's taken a lot from all of us. Okay? And, um. We did the best we could on this particular project. We've learned a lot. And it's, we've learned a lot, and it's taken a lot from us. And you know what, well, concerns I had and the concerns I have with it, we get a nitrogen fertilizer plant. We heard it from Lima, Ohio. We heard it from Weaver, Iowa. Weaver, Iowa, nitrogen plant was a new build, green fill. Out in the middle of nowhere of Iowa. Okay? Lima, Ohio is right outside of, uh, of Lima, right next to her oil refinery. And what I remember going there, Mr. Weber went with us way back in those days, I recall. Is we have to make sure that industry isn't too big for your community and overwhelms you. That's what we heard. And so with the Fu Fang project, I did have concerns. Is is this a project that will overwhelm the community? And at the time, my biggest concern was the infrastructure. Because I know how large J R Simplot was, and this is going to be multiple times that size. It was going to be challenging. Can we do all those things? That's why we emphasize all those task orders, all those studies. To try to get this thing right. The one thing we didn't get right is that we didn't have any idea with the geopolitical atmosphere that we're going to go on. And so, again, we said from the beginning, we were going to try to get get to yes in this project. I told Mr. Regan. We're going to try to get to yes in your project. We're going to be open-minded, work hard. And do everything we have, uh, to move forward the project. I think the soybean crushing facility is a project we can handle, we can move forward with. That we can be successful, but there's going to be lots of challenges on that one too, so. Uh, those are some of my initial thoughts. It's taken a lot from your city administrative team, to be frank. And, um, we did the very best we could. And I don't have regrets on how hard and what we did to try to make it happen and make the city of Grand Forks proud. As we move the project forward. Um, we talked about this annexation. We decided to bring the annexation in as an adjacent. What are we going to do with the epitome energy? We're just going to annex the epitome energy site. Partly, you know, there's not an adjacent. Area, so all these things are, they're, they're, they're apples and oranges. Some are oranges and oranges, and we're trying to look through all those various aspects to be fair, be very fair, because you know what we don't want to do as staff? We don't want to really make people upset. We don't wake up every morning to try to hurt people. We try to do the best we can for the city of Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. If I could respond, I I think on behalf of the city council, it took a big impact on all of us. I don't think it was just the staff. I think everybody. Had sleepless nights and went through a lot to get here too. That's why I'm saying lessons learned. How do we make sure we don't have sleepless nights and whatever going forward? And that we learn from that and take a look at. So it's more in the. I want to im- image moving together successfully, because like even the pilot agreement, I I wasn't aware, is there, is there a pilot? Agreement coming forward?
I think they were going to request one. Yep, a a tax incentive. They're going to ask for a tax incentive.
They already negotiated on these personally.
Um, we have not negotiated anything. I I think what I've learned from Fu Fang is that was a twenty-year agreement. Uh, I've said, I've said to Mr. Regan, I should, um, my goal, just so you know, as a minister, is it should be ten years or less. We need to get something upfront for all the local taxing entities at the same time, but we need to make sure it's less long. And less of incentive. And, um, as to 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 bring this particular project here, I think one of the existential this thing that this community has to determine is. Acre business projects are hard. But we live in this fertile valley. Thank goodness, we had predecessors that developed the potato industry, to develop the, uh, sugar beet industry. That developed the North Dakota mill and elevator. None of those things were easy, I suspect, back in the day. But do we want to continue to move forward acre business because they're not warehouses? They're not corporate headquarters. They're challenging, and they have environmental concerns, they have infrastructure concerns, but. That's one of the strengths that we have in our community. It's one of the things we're proud of, that we're a neighbor business community. And how to do those right, those are, that adds a lot of stress. It's stressful thinking about epitome energy. To to make that right.
I have one last comment. Um, I really like Ken's idea of the after-action report. Um, you know, one thing that we could do, though, is maybe like reach out to the Air Force and or Mr. Burke, and maybe they could. Kind of help us see where maybe we missed some of those red flags. So I do really like your idea, Mr. Regan. Thank you. With that, I motion.